Ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling in order the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Dexter Township Planning Commission. I invite you to all rise and join Commissioner Smith as we lead him in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I ask Secretary Meyer to please call the rolls. And when your name is called, should you have any conflicts with agenda items, please inform the commission meeting of such. Secretary Meyer?
Mr. Smith?
None.
What's he add?
None.
Sean Gerhardt?
None.
Chairman Burge?
None.
Commissioner Barry?
None.
And I have none. And Ari Stroff told us previously that he was going to be absent tonight.
Yes, we were informed of Mr. Stroff's absence. This evening on the agenda, I have one request at the, one change at the request of our township Director of Planning and Zoning. Under Action Items A, we have listed the Planning Commission bylaws discussion amendment to Article Five. Also, we are going to have amendments to Article Six as part of the agenda. Are there any further changes to the agenda that we request? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. And because this is, it is on the agenda at this point, I am opening public comment for items that are not upon the agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak, we would ask you to approach the microphone. Please, for the sake of record, give us your name and address and define your comments to three minutes if possible.
Joseph Spiegel, seven nine oh five, Sour Drive, Gregory. There's a non-agenda item I'd like to bring to the attention of the commission. I would suggest some investigation we made into a anonymous tip line. The Securities and Exchange Commission has always had an anonymous tip line. Not just in connection with the whistleblower act. In addition, the state of Michigan does not have an anonymous tip line. Although, as an expert for the state of Michigan and securities matters, I can tell the commission that a number of the actions undertaken by HHE's office come from anonymous tips. The tipper doesn't have to be disclosed until there's a grand jury or an indictment. The FBI has a totally anonymous tip line. And I would suggest that we've made progress by having a semi-anonymous tip line, where a person who has a complaint, it won't be disclosed unless through the Freedom of Information Act. I would suggest that an investigation or at least some discussion be made for a totally anonymous tip line. And in having some policy practice and procedure with regards to same. Having taken an enormous step in connection with such things as short-term rentals, I think the next step can be, without costing the township a lot of money or staff time, a policy practice and procedure with regards to tips called in by a resident concerning any matter, I think would be in the interest of the township. So I would be willing to help if wanted in connection with any policy practice and procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. See, no other members of the public at this time. I am going to close public comment. And we shall now move to action item seven A, Planning Commission Bylaws Discussion Amendment to Article Five, Officers. DPZ, Zire, would you give us an indication for this topic?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Today we have before you a handful of proposed amendments to the Planning Commission bylaws. A handful of these have been discussed throughout the twenty twenty five calendar year. Specifically during the last handful of meetings, there was some questions around the chair vacancy procedures. In the amendments in the packet, when there is a vacancy in the chair position, the vice chair would automatically assume the position of chair for the remainder of the term. And then the Planning Commission would then elect a new vice chair to serve for the duration of the term. This replaces a previous provision that required the vice chair to serve only until the next meeting when a new chair was elected. Moving on to Article Six, there has been some changes to Section F forum, where it adds a procedure for selecting a temporary chair when both the chair and vice chair are absent. I understand the likelihood of that occurring is small, but it could happen. And we need some direction in the event that that does occur. I would also clarify that the ex officio member is not eligible to serve as chair, vice chair, or temporary chair. Moving on to Section L, Order of Business and Agenda, there is an amendment to add a roll call to the list of agenda items to move conflict of interest review after the approval of the agenda. And includes public comment as part of the action items agenda item. And then removes the phrase "non-agenda items" to simplify the public comment structure and to allow members of the public to speak on both agenda matters and non-agenda items.
Thank you, DPZ Rada. I am going to open the public comment, or open the discussion, rather, about these changes. The first item, I want to clarify that in the amendment five A three, the vice chair automatically assumed the chair for the remainder of the term. And the Planning Commission will elect a new vice chair concerned for the remainder of the term. If we look at Article five A two, that is clarified in that for this section, a term shall mean the officer term, not the term in which we are serving on the Planning Commission. So if we were to elect a new vice chair, he or she would serve only until December thirty one, when January at our first meeting, we will be electing a new vice chair, unless that person is re-elected. And moving on, I will open the floor to Planning Commission members. Does anyone have any comment, question, or further discussion on any of the amendments as presented?
I have a, I have a question and it may be silly, but I just want to make sure. So are we going to just have one public comment per meeting and it can be on everything? Or, because I'm looking at the order of business and agendas and you've got the call to order, the pledge allegiance, the roll call, the approval of agenda, then the conflict of interest review. But then you go to public comments is slashed, it has a line through it. And then it says action items, approval of minute, then Board of Trustees update, and then concerns of the Planning Commission members, and then public comments. So we're only going to do one? Is this to say that we're only going to do one public comment period during a whole meeting? Instead of two like we have currently?
There will be two. So the intent of this amendment was to have public comment for the action items listed in the agenda. And then at the end of the agenda, have another, have the ability for members of the public to speak on both agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay. So do we, where would public comments in the beginning, where would that fall? Would that, because I see number six as public comments, but.
Sure. So under action items in the parentheses, it's added and public comment as appropriate. And then public comment will continue be, continue to be a requirement for public hearings.
Okay. That's what I thought. Great.
Ms. Abbott, part of the reasoning behind this was that if someone that has interest in an issue that is on the agenda, I feel that that interest would be more properly expressed when we, the commission, are addressing that agenda, rather than trying to remember, well, Ms. Smith had a real concern about squirrels in the graveyard. But she talked about it up there, but we want to make sure that it doesn't get ignored when we get to the actual item. So I feel that it'd be much more appropriate to have any public comment or make public comment a part of the commission's discussion of that particular item.
That's great.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, I did have a question. So for example, tonight, Mr. Spiegel spoke about the tip line. If we adopt this new order of business, when would he be able to bring up the tip line?
During item eleven, just general public comment.
I guess, I just find that, I don't particularly care for that, just because if someone has something that is not on the agenda, they would then be have to sit through all the meeting, the entire meeting before they could speak. And you know, it's not that that's bad, but it's just that, you know, we've had meetings go four hours. I mean, and that's rare, but you know, if they, if they had to sit through like training and the tongue, it just seems to me like it'd be a long time before you remember to publish. You could say there's, you know, because someone might just want to say their concern and then they.
That's a valid point. The Planning Commission could consider keeping public comment, but maybe striking the parentheses, non-agenda items. Give people the ability to speak on whatever it is that matters to them at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Further comments, questions, members of the?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of nitpicky points, which may be unimportant, but I'd like to bring them forward anyway. The, these, for example, Article five, A, number three, there is no mention of when exactly the, the Planning Commission would elect a new vice chair. I would suggest adding to the end of that sentence, for example, at the next Planning Commission meeting at which a quorum is present. And that would apply to several other, for example, number four and number five. It's a small point, but.
At some point, Mr. You, anything for the key?
I would like to ask a question regarding the same Article five changes. Is, I noticed that in Article six, item F, which is highlighted in red, much of this information seems to be redundant. And maybe that's fine. But it does seem to repeat much of the information. That, that may be totally okay, but.
Would you, could you be a little bit more specific?
Well, discussing the chair vacancy, the vice chair shall preside as temporary. Temporary chair. Oh, I take it back. It's not redundant. It only speaks to the, the fact that it's a temporary chip, not the election. My fault.
Thank you, Barrett. Anything else?
No.
Any other members of the Planning Commission comments, questions regarding the subject, changes to the bylaws?
If I may, Chair?
Mr. Smith?
With regard to what Commissioner Meyer was saying with regard, with, about the public comment, I do agree that it seems like we should have an opportunity early in the meeting to make comments rather than having to wait to the end. My concern is, if we were to keep item six as public comment, then this new opportunity for public comment is part of item seven, which keeps the two really close together. And so that almost might seem, they, they just blur. They could functionally blur together, even though there is no, even though they are fully separate items in the way they function, you know, one being where we just, the action item where we discuss things versus the public comment where they can just speak. I feel like if we were to consider keeping public comment early, is there a way to not have them back to back? But I don't see a way to do that. So I'm a little, I'm kind of going both ways about it. I, I would prefer that they're separated further apart, but I don't see a way to put them further apart without making the public sit through the entire meeting in order to have an opportunity to address the commission.
So there's two things that you could do and that I've seen many other communities do. Some keep that they have just two sections for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end. Because things happen in between and the public might have some feedback as well. And if you look at the agenda, you, concerns of Planning Commission members, Director of Planning and Zoning, Supervisor, Reporting Secretary come at the end at ten. So that usually often you're talking about things that are either in the meeting or things that you wanted to bring to the meeting. So one option is to keep two public comment periods, one at six, one at eleven. Planning Commissioner Smith, I hear your concern about having them close together. But if you think about how the action items work, usually what you'll have is A B eight items A and B after, and then the case will be introduced, you'll talk about it, and then the chair, usually about ten, fifteen minutes into it, then has the public comment portion. So while they do seem together, when you look at this, functionally, if you think about a meeting, they're not as close. And then they're very specific on that action item in particular.
So that, that makes sense. And perhaps that's why currently it states non-agenda items. I think that whichever way we go, if we keep it there or not, that we should just make clear to the public so they understand when they should be speaking.
And Mr. Smith, I think that responsibility of the chair to ensure that the members of the public know that they may speak, the, the, the three times that they may speak are one at the initial public comment, if we leave that in, two, at the invitation of the chair when we are discussing a particular agenda item, and number three, at the conclusion of the meeting, if we also leave that public comment in. And listening to the discussion, I have absolutely no problem supporting us going that way if we choose to do so.
Mr. Chair, I agree with what you just said. So I feel like in the time I've been on this mission since twenty twenty, we've had meetings, many meetings where there's just no member of the public. So if someone does come, then I, I think they should be allowed to speak, even if it's three times. And if there's a meeting like a short-term rental where there were members of the public and it was very, what people had a lot to say. I think as long as you let people speak and keep it three minutes, I think it would still be orderly. So I just, I appreciate people that actually come here, like Mr. Spiegel, and that speak up, because otherwise we just have no idea what people are thinking. So I appreciate it.
So question for Commissioner Meyer. When you first proposed this, did you intend to keep the public comment number six for non-agenda items or any type of comment? I mean.
Because it's like that, people can, because if it's on the agenda, then they can speak during the action or they could speak at the end of the meeting. So you'd have one for non-agenda. And at the end of the meeting, they also could speak non-agenda items, whatever they wanted to talk about. But I think the, I liked the non-agenda item.
Okay.
If people came up with some things.
So I do too, to keep the first public comment for non-agenda items only. And then as we talk about action items, allow for public comment. And then the final one, would you consider non-agenda items only? Or would you allow someone to come back and re-comment on something that was already discussed?
That's a tough one. Because you know, sometimes you'd sit there and you listen, then you come up with a new thought. So I'd hate to preclude someone, but they could always just let you know, I guess. I could go either way on that.
Well, I'm just wondering, would we be allowed to do both? Have a public comment for non-agenda items, public comment for action items during the action item, and then come back and have a public comment for, you know, agenda item for, for both and have that crossed out? And whether that's something we could actually do?
Ms. Rada, if I may, jump in at this point. One of the fundamental principles of Robert Truitt's order is that once we decide an item, the item is finished, unless we choose to, one of the voting members who voted in the negative chooses to bring it up again, other than that, we have concluded the business on that item. So a member of the public that wanted to complain about our treatment of the squirrels in the graveyard, sorry, but we've already discussed that item. Unless he or she wants to vote, Mr. Ryer, to have it brought up again before the Planning Commission, we're done with the issue.
Yeah. So we would be non-agenda items for number eleven?
Yeah, Mr. Chair brought up a very good point and I agree.
Can I make one?
Mr. Smith?
One devil's advocate comment there is I could see it as an opportunity for the equivalent of a dissenting opinion. So if a member of the public didn't agree with what we had decided, it's an opportunity in an orderly manner to express their opinion why, and they will have been on the record. You know, it won't change what we have done as a group, but they have an opportunity to go on the record to explain why they feel that it's an incorrect decision. And now it's there in perpetuity if it were to come up later on. Again, it's just that opportunity for public to be heard.
Mr. Smith, you, as you do have raised an excellent point, because we do not want any member of the public in our Planning Commission meetings to feel like he or she has been stifled in their comment in any way. So I, I think you have an excellent point there, sir.
I would suggest though that we have to be careful that it's not an opportunity for, I don't want to say mayhem, but just lose control. But that it again, for well-ordered dissenting opinions, that it's a way to put it on record without just being complaining and attacking the commission for what was done orderly. Not sure if there's a way to do that or not, but.
Well, unfortunately, or I think that was a faulty responsibility of the center seat here.
I'm comfortable with the center seat. If we allow public comment on decisions that have been.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. And frankly, I think it is more important that we grant the public the opportunity to comment than it is to have our feelings hurt by somebody disagreeing with what we said.
Mr. Chair? I have one more item to bring to your attention. It looks like we are also missing discussion items on this list of Order of Business and Agenda. And we need to add that. It's typically number eight. But somehow it was missed in this list of agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I also wonder, because with the current agenda today, it says public hearings, we have none, but do we need to add public hearings at all?
Mr. Rada?
See, we have public hearings on today's agenda. No, I'm not. But we did have one. It's not listed back here in this section. We need to add that shit.
Excellent, excellent point, Ms. Meyer. Mr. Ryer, if it may be appropriate, change their statement.
Absolutely. So we'll add public hearings as its own agenda item, as well as discussion items, as they're currently not listed here.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Meyer?
And then on discussion items, should that have the same thing as action items in terms of the parentheses, unfinished business? And then new business and public comment as appropriate? Will you take public comment on discussion items?
Frankly, as less than been, I see no reason why we could not have public comment on our discussion items. Again, following the philosophy of trying to let our members of the public share their interests and their comments and opinions, why not? I mean, it's, again, in keeping with our philosophy here, of expressing maximum participation by our, our constituents, I would say yes. Mr. Ryer, we have thoroughly, thoroughly rewritten what we have planned to do this evening.
Absolutely.
You think you, assuming that we are getting close to the end of modifications to the bylaws, do you think you have enough information, sir, that you can create a new set of bylaws that we can vote on more coherently than taking all the comments that we have had here?
Absolutely. For our December meeting, I will have this fine-tuned to include all of the discussion and comments tonight. And hopefully we can make a decision before the new year.
Thank you, sir. And before we bail on this, does anyone have any further changes they would like to make?
As roll call was taken tonight,
Yes.
the response was no conflicts. I see that you have a conflict of interest as number five. Does that need to be separated out? Because with the agenda that's being proposed, you're going to have two roll calls. You're going to have a roll call number three, and you're going to have another one in number five. Would you just put conflict of interest as part of the conflict with the roll call in number three? So it's all addressed at the same time?
Ms. Miller, the reason that it was done this way is we have the roll call before the approval of the agenda. We can't have a conflict of interest before the agenda is approved because it may not be on the agenda. That was why that was put in that panel.
I think you can have a conflict of interest before, because you got the agenda in front of you.
But if the item turns out not to be on the agenda for some reason. We changed the squirrels in the graveyard to something else. Then it won't be on the agenda, ergo, no conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Where are the comments? Hearing none. And if we've given our DPC, uh, at least a couple of days' work here. We'll move on to the next item on the uh, discussion. Review and discussion of Township Board September sixteen, twenty twenty five recommendation regarding short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts. Mister Ryer?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Today, um, I have before you uh. A memo, um, starting a discussion on the board's September sixteenth. Recommendation in regards to short-term rentals. Uh, as you all may remember, the planning commission. Sent to the township board their recommendation on the proposed ordinance forty-five zoning ordinance amendment. Um, the board declined to adopt the planning commission's recommendation. But tasked us with looking at the bed and breakfast ordinance uh, as a potential. Means to address short-term rentals here in the community. Uh, specifically, they wanted us to look at the definition. Of bed and breakfast to potentially include short-term rentals. And to evaluate whether or not um, accessory dwelling units or ADUs could be included in the bed and breakfast framework. Planning staff brought a draft amendment to your attention this past summer. Um, to amend the bed and breakfast ordinance and we have attached that. Uh, for your reference. Uh, the proposed amendment includes a change to the definition. And a minor modification uh, to the bed and breakfast ordinance to include the language short-term rental. Everything else currently. Stays the same. All of the regulations under the bed and breakfast ordinance are the same, uh, specifically them being owner occupied. Um, limiting the number events and um. Maintaining um, adequate trash facilities, guest rooms and kitchen facilities. I've also included uh, for your reference, the definition of accessory dwelling uh, for you to look at. As well as the land use table showing where ADUs are currently permitted, where bed and breakfasts are currently permitted. As well as the current standards for ADUs. Uh, bed and breakfasts are currently a special land use in Dexter Township. Um, anyone who wants to open up a bed and breakfast must come before the planning commission. Uh, for a public hearing. And uh, just. Show how they uh, comply with the B and B standards. As well as the special land use standards. We are available uh, to take any questions you may have, um, but. Megan and I wanted to kickstart this conversation uh, as the board wanted us to take a dive into potentially amending this.
Oh, thank you, Mister Ryer. And before I open up to the balance of the planning commission, I have. Two or three uh, clarifications I would like you to make. First off, on page one or page seventeen of thirty-one. The definition under bed and breakfast includes short-term rental where accommodations are offered for periods of less than thirty consecutive days. And then we jump down to short-term rental, a commercial activity consisting of renting a dwelling or unit. Or a term of not more than thirty nights. I might be. Life specking here a bit, but it does seem to be a little bit inconsistent. Is there a reason that we are defining them in this matter?
Um, the reason why they're defined in this matter is because. Short-term rentals and B and Bs are very common, are, are, I'm sorry, not common, um, similar. And the short-term aspect, um, people who stay at B and Bs. Um, typically only stay for a few nights. People who stay in short-term rentals typically stay for only a few nights. The big difference here between the two. Is that B and Bs are owner occupied. The property owner is on site, usually provides uh, some type of meal. Uh, for their guests. And they remain um. There the entire time. Short-term rentals um, are different. In uh, in the sense that the owner is typically not present in their offsite.
Mister Chair, there would be no reason that we couldn't use um. For periods of less than thirty consecutive days in both dimensions, and I think that's probably the more precise.
That was, that was more what I was alluding to, yes. Just the, the proximity there being that close together. Might cause people to wonder what's the difference between days and nights. And my next concern. Okay, on page nineteen of thirty-one, when we're still in definitions. Accessory dwellings. The last sentence. Quote, also known as a guest apartment, accessory apartment, granny flat or in-law apartment. Is kind of hanging out there all by itself. What I propose is that we modify the paragraph. Ex- to read uh, accessory dwelling. An accessory dwelling. Is an accessory dwelling, also known as a guest apartment, accessory apartment, granny flat or in-law apartment. Is an area associated with a single-family dwelling that provides supplementary housing containing et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So move that, that last sentence, uh, kind of hanging out there all, all by itself only, and putting it into the context of the paragraph.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying. Uh, put that last sentence towards the front. And uh, merge, merge that with the entire uh, definition.
And on page eighteen of thirty-one. Item ten, the last item. On that page says kitchen facilities. Separate or additional kitchen facility shall not be provided for guests. Yet in our definition of uh, bed and breakfast and short-term rental. People are, at least in short-term rental, being allowed to cook, I would assume.
The short-term, because the bed and breakfast definition references the short-term rental. Then the short, think of it as a rectangle and a square. So the bed and breakfast is the rectangle, the short-term rental is the square. They all have to abide by the same rules. So under this, a short-term rental would not be able to have separate. Kitchen facilities. And it's only that the host can offer the meals, I think, is what it says, or.
Which would be, I, I agree, that under the definition of a bed and breakfast, which actually is where we are. Except, again, bed and breakfast, including short-term rental units. On the introduction on paragraph eight. Put short-term rentals into bed and breakfast, which is what we're trying to do, but it also. Item ten removes the kitchen facilities from short-term rentals.
I think ultimately the intent is to ensure that there's one kitchen. Wherever the guests are staying, uh, the main kitchen. Um, that's not to say the guests can't cook their own meal. Um, the. Se- uh, number four meals say that meals may be served to overnight guests. Um. It's not implying that they have to be served meals. Um, so I assume that it leaves. Some room for guests to use the kitchen that's on site. Um, also, I think the intent is to um. Not have multiple kitchens or multiple units, uh, per se, uh, like a, uh, an apartment. Um, off of a house with its own kitchen. It's to be one cohesive um, dwelling where guests and the owner.
Right, oh, thank you.
So Mister, may I, just, just to clarify that point, so uh, an accessory, a house with an accessory dwelling. Could not fit under that description?
That's correct. So we would need to look at that. Um. During the board meeting, I believe. Their intent was to have us, or the planning commissioners, consider allowing the owner of the property. To be present, but maybe in an ADU, not the primary dwelling. Um, that was what I took away from the meeting. Um, to maybe have that option for B and B owners uh, to use. An accessory dwelling while the guests use the main, uh, the main dwelling, or the primary dwelling.
Okay, I, I agree with you there. Uh, I'm reminiscent of the. Master plan, which does address ADUs and short-term rentals.
It, it does. Uh, the master plan mentioned short-term rentals one time, and that is um. To shy away from using ADUs as short-term rentals. Um, that's the only time it's mentioned.
Which I think under the current construct that we have here, although obviously not yet approved. That that will be satisfied, not using ADUs as short-term rentals.
Um, what I, I will like to emphasize, um, you know, the proposed ordinance in front of you. Really just references short-term rentals and adds that to the B and B ordinance. Um, the. ADU definition and the schedule of uses in the ADU um, requirements are all current standards. We would need to integrate. Um, ADU standards into the B and B ordinance if we, if the planning commission uh, decided that was appropriate to do so.
Thank you. All right, planning commission members, I have satisfied my questions. I'm leaving it open now to all.
I'll go first, um. If you like, since we've already had a bed and breakfast. Provisions in here, I find adding the term short-term rentals to the B and B. Section is, I think it's confusing, especially since the board, what I, and I did print out the section of the board minutes um. From September sixteen. Is that we still do not allow short-term rentals, just starting to say that bed and breakfast can be a short-term rental, I think is confusing. I mean, I found it confusing. Um, it, because a bed and breakfast is just a bed and breakfast on its own. And I think with the ADUs, I was confused about. If you have an ADU that is like, you've had the example of a, a lot where there's a main house. And maybe the owner lives in there during the winter, but in the summer will go out there with a garage and then rent it out. The, the main house to guests. But then if it's a bed and breakfast, would you have to leave his dwelling unit and come and serve breakfast to those people in the big house? Because that's what a bed and breakfast, I think, fits under that definition.
So not necessarily, um, you know, the, the meal provision is um, vague uh, in the sense that. It doesn't force the property owner to serve breakfast. I think the. The big goal of um, this proposal is to keep the property owner on site. Uh, because with public comment and with the board's concerns, I think um, a lot of. Comments were concerned about the property owner not being there in the event that there's an issue. Uh, with the, with the rental of, of the property. Uh, additionally. Anyone who wanted to do a short-term rental, uh, like Me- Megan said earlier, would have to follow all the provisions of the B and B ordinance. Go through the special land use process. So there could be, you know, additional conditions. Leaved upon the applicant, um, if needed, uh, during those public hearings um, and meetings.
What if you had a situation where somebody owned two adjacent lots and they lived in one and then one of the residents called that the accessory dwelling unit? Does it have to be on the same lot?
Currently, ADUs need to be on the same lot.
In this.
Um, it's in the ADU um, requirements on page twenty-two of the packet. Actually, I um, I take that back. Um, in the Lakes Residential. Uh, in article seven of the ordinance, uh, there's a provision that requires lake lots to have ADUs on. The property where the primary dwelling is. You can't have an ADU across the street or across the right-of-way or on an adjacent lot. It needs to be on the same lot for the lake. Lots or the lake residential zone lots. For the other zoning districts, um. I believe that is a possibility. And um, you, you'll see a lot of large garages across the street in the lake districts and um. None of those are allowed to have an ADU. What you might see is an upstairs for a storage area, you know, people can use those um. How they want, but they can't live in it full-time. Uh. The township and Chelsea Area Construction Agency. Typically flag each other when these garages go up to ensure that uh, we're not approving. Uh, facilities to allow it to be habitated full-time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anyone else? Ms. Eric?
Um, I'm going to echo a little bit what Commissioner Meyer just mentioned, but I, I think it's important. I watched the Board of Trustees meeting twice and then I read through the minutes. And that motion stated to request the planning department to propose to the planning commission amendment. To the zoning ordinance to add clarifying language to the effect that bed and breakfast are only. Are the only permitted short-term rental use in Dexter Township. So it sounded like to me this motion is saying that. Bed and breakfast are the only type of short-term rental that. Is, can be considered in the township. And that we're not really considering any other type of short-term rental. And it's confusing. It's confusing. Um. And then the second one motion was. To direct the planning department to work with the planning commission to revisit the definition of bread and back breakfast. To potentially expand the definition to include accessory dwelling units that are attached and not attached. Um, I kind of want to address. Both of those a little bit and what our, what our chair said first. Um, one, you were correct about the thirty days and thirty nights. I was going to bring that up. Um. Is this the only alternative that we have to look at to just include short-term rentals in the bed and breakfast? Because I think, you know, we're opening up that can of worms again, you know, or it's going to be confusing to people. Um. You know, and I, I told the uh, Board of Trustees at, at one meeting that. The master plan really needs to address this stuff and it really doesn't address it. And I recommended maybe waiting for a revision to the master plan to. Incorporate some of these items because as our Director of Planning and Zoning said. As our Director of Planning and Zoning said. In terms of the accessory dwelling units. It's only mentioned in one place and. You know, we can't use short term rentals in accessory dwelling units according to the master plan. So according to me, I don't even really wanna go there. Coming back to bed and breakfast. The whole owner occupied part, it's so vague in the code right now that I have an owner occupied house. If I go away for the weekend, can I invite guests in there? It's an owner occupied. But I'm not gonna be present while they're there. Does this proposal allow for that? It doesn't say I have to be on site, I just have to be an owner occupied unit. Doesn't say I have to host. You know, it doesn't say I have to be there. And a bed and breakfast, um. Is a residential facility that is owner occupied with overnight accommodations. That are provided or offered for compensation, and that compensation. Is bathing, lavatory, and a breakfast meal, it doesn't say or. It says and. It means they get a breakfast meal. And then in the rest of the regulations, it's saying the breakfast meal is optional. You know, so if it's optional, I guess I don't really have to be there if they can cook for themselves. Still owner occupied. So again, a lot of confusion, there's just a lot of confusion, and I think. Uh. The short term rental part, yes, it can fall under, under this, but I think. The bed and breakfast would have to be tightened up a little bit. Like the definition would really have to be tightened up a little bit to not allow for. The real short term rentals that wanna continue to existing. To exist the way they are. I mean, they would really have to conform to something that's tightened up. Um. Sure, I don't have anything else. Owen, and my only other point was. Under the schedule uses for bread and back, bread and bed and breakfast. Allowing. Them to remain under special land use. Um, and adding in. The short term rental as part of that definition. The first decision criteria for a special land use. Is that. The special land use is compatible with the goals and objectives. Um, and future land use map of the master plan. And again, it, it, the master plan doesn't even address short term rentals. So, I don't know, those are my comments. I know they're kind of all over the place, but I feel like this is a little bit. Uh, confusing and needs to be tightened up, or we're gonna have a lot more short term rentals out there as bed and breakfast.
Thank you for that, I consider it very appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I have a question?
Absolutely, Ms. Meyer.
Are there any bed and breakfasts in the township currently?
I don't know the number, but um, we have approved a handful in the past. Um. I can locate some previous packets and agendas and share them with you.
I was just curious, I, I've never heard of any, whereas, you know, if you go on Airbnb's and see where the short term rentals are. But I've never heard of any, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's any um. Bed and breakfast websites similar to the Airbnbs and VRBO websites. Um, I'm not familiar uh, with that, nor am I stayed one. Stayed one.
So, Mr. Chair, if, if I can follow up on that comment. Um, I did try and research if they were existing. Bread and back, bed and breakfast in Dexter Township at this time, and I couldn't find any. And a special land use. Um, permit is only allowed for two years, right? If it's operational and after two years, if it's not operational, they would have to reapply. I think under special land use, I did see that if it's not operational after two years. So it'd be nice to know if there are any that are operational. Um, and if they were approved. Five, ten years ago, would it have expired by now that they would have to come back and. Get another. Permit for that use.
If they discontinued.
If they discontinued their use for more than two years.
So it looks like um, an approved special land use shall run with the land, but shall expire. Um, if there's a discontinuation uh, for a period of two consecutive years, so.
Could you do some research on that to see if we have any existing that. Haven't gone beyond the two year discontinuation period?
Something that we could do, um, and we do have room and routine there to do a little research every month is to. Um. Research. Two or three communities. Bed and breakfast regulations. And bring those to you, um, so you can look at some that are, have more rules or, or, or stricter.
Thank you. Things that would be quite useful. Any further comments on? This area? Mr. R, do you feel that you have sufficient guidance here to move on with this one?
I think so, um, I appreciate all your comments, I do agree, um, this could potentially cause some confusion. Um. I think ultimately the goal. Is to be clear that. We don't allow. Short term rentals as the mass public use them as, but only as a bed and breakfast, and I think. Uh, we could come back um, with a better. Proposal and maybe some uh. Other community standards for your review.
Thank you, sir. Now, moving on to uh, discussion item B. Discussion about establishing a master plan review committee in the next four days to discuss implementation of master action plan. And to evaluate potential revisions and updates. The township is required to periodically review the master plan to determine. Whether to amend, re-adopt, or prepare a new plan. And I might add that that periodic review is. Required under Michigan law every five years. However, there's nothing that says that it can't be reviewed more frequently. And I feel particularly sensitive about this issue. Because in the last year, we have been faced with short term rentals. Renewable energy, data centers. And as of June thirtieth of this year, housing. And. Absolutely taking nothing away from the very effective job that Vice Chair Hurd. Performed when she was Chair of the Short Term Rental Committee. We obviously have not satisfied. Our concerns on that area, nor have we really satisfied what the master plan is. How, the master plan addresses short term rentals. And the master plan doesn't even talk about renewable energy, data centers, and. The area on housing is. I would say inadequate in light of the. Uh, June of twenty twenty-five change in uh, Lansing. So what my. Initial idea was to propose to the Planning Commission that we formally request the board. To. Establish a committee or authorize the Planning Commission to establish a committee. And my initial recommendation was thinking two Planning Commission members. Two members of the general public and one township board member. Uh, this committee meeting quarterly. And. Being tasked with reviewing the master plan and identifying areas that. Should be revised and making recommendations as to what those revisions may be. Uh. Also, the reason I want to go to the Township Board for authorization. Is I want this to be a compensated committee in the same. Way that the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals are compensated. Because we're asking citizens of this township to make some pretty serious recommendations to us. Now, will this. Committee be subject to the Open Meetings Act? Probably not, because they will be making only recommendations, they will not be making any decisions. That's our job. But that is not to imply that the committee would be meeting in secret. They would obviously be noticing their meetings on the. Uh, on the township website and. Uh, probably in the uh, paper or local publication. Uh, but. You know, summing it up here, I feel that it is important to involve as many. Citizens. Of the township as we can, and I think that if we want to. Improve our master plan, make it more representative of what. The. Residents of this township desire. That a committee to help us define and decide. What and how to change our master plan. That this would be an effective way to do so. And I am now open for any comment regarding this.
Well, I think um. Chair, if I might.
Of course.
I really love this idea, and, and the reason I do is because even, even if the master plan is not up for a review or to be changed for a few years. A quarterly review is, is great because you're just itemizing the things that we need to be paying attention. When we do hire a consultant to update our master plan. So I think this is, I think that having a committee like this is very, going to be very important and helpful. When we come to that five year mark where we need to. Reconstruct our master plan.
Well, thank you, Ms. Abbott, but. Uh, my thinking on this was. We don't need to wait five years.
Right.
To modify the master plan.
Okay.
As you say, if we have issues out there that. May not be impending, but would be nice to address. This, as you say, would be an excellent way to. Identify and record those issues that they could be used. In the consideration of hiring a consultant to help us, I agree, thank you. Further comments?
Um, I like the idea also, and I, you know, I had pulled out the master plan and looked at it. This past week. Because of the data center issues. Uh, and I do think that it would be nice or. Be good if everyone here looked at it again. Since it seemed what we've been through and come up with any sort of ideas, even though there's only going to be two planning commission members. I think it would be who must have everyone read it.
Oh, absolutely.
And also, I don't know if the. Um, like Megan, if you've had, I know you've worked with other jurisdictions. Have you ever seen a master plan, you thought like, this is the best master plan I've ever seen? And you might wanna share, like, if you see, like, a really, because I even thought ours was very good, I mean, worked very hard on it, but if you see, like. Something that is, that's exceptional, I'd like to see what it's like.
Um, I can, we can absolutely provide that, but I would also suggest, um, Michigan Association of Planning has award winners every year. For um, uh, the best comprehensive plans in the state. Um, so, and I, I can send Fletcher that, that link, and then it can go out to all of you, and they, I think it, they have it back for a couple of years. Um. I think. If. I just wanna add though, if you feel like there is a need to update the master plan. Within the next year. You can do an amendment as. Your chair pointed out at any time. But that is a separate process that has specific notifications in the beginning. And at the end of it. Um, so if you. With a committee that's meeting regularly, they can update it and they can track action items. But there's formal things that need to happen to amend a master plan. In terms of notices and then um, also notices at the beginning. Um, a recommendation of a draft by the Planning Commission to the Township Board. Township Board releasing to adjacent communities, adjacent community reviews. Public hearing, planning commission, recommendation, township board approval.
Thank you. Further comments? Uh, and I would ask that we have a motion. To request our Township Board Representative. Propose to the Township Board. A master plan review committee. Informing from what I think yesterday it's here. I'd ask the board authorization for. Compensation for this authorization for us to coordinate committee. And compensation for the committee wants it as a sadness.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
I would like to make said motion. However, I don't have that motion written down or in my um. In my head right now. So. I, my question then comes down to. Can we use a so moved, or do we need to actually, in order to make the motion, state the entire motion with the full detail?
What I would recommend, Mr. Smith, is looking at page twenty-three of thirty-one. Proposal, mini compensation would be the proposal.
Okay.
Be the motion.
So. I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the Township Board the creation and funding of a master plan committee. The committee would meet quarterly and serve in an advisory capacity to the Planning Commission.
It has been moved and supported. That the Planning Commission recommended the Township Board. The creation and funding of a master plan committee. The committee would meet quarterly and serve in an advisory capacity to the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Hearing that, we will go by voice vote. Ms. Meyer, as Secretary, would you please poll the members of the Planning Commission?
Commissioner Smith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rusty Abbott?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Chairman Birch?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
And I, Commissioner Mayor, vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Abbott, do you understand what we are asking of?
Yes, I will write up a report for the next board meeting and, and have that ready, because that will, I think that they have to do that during the Board of Trustee meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on our intended listening. Is continued discussion on data centers. Uh. As I'm sure you are aware. Well, data centers are an oncoming trend. They haven't necessarily, to my knowledge, no, no one has proposed a data center for Dexter Township yet. But it wouldn't surprise me if that happens tomorrow. And. We, I would like to see us. Prepare. Prepared. For the introduction of a request for a data center in Dexter Township. I'm hoping that we can avoid the. Rough and a hard spot situation that Celine Township has found themselves in. In the two areas of. Data center and renewable energy. And I'm sure that. I'm quite confident that everyone is aware of the issues and. The problems that are occurring right now in Celine Township. Because they did not adequately handle them in the quest. I'm taking no position. Or personally on whether or not a data center should be here. But I would really like us to. Be prepared should one. Uh, request. Signing in Dexter Township. Any further comments or question, discussion on that? Mr. R.
Good evening, Commissioners, um. As Chairman Birch stated, uh, we. Are seeing a, a very new technology emerging rapidly. Um, I know that every time I turn on the news in the car. Uh, I hear something about data centers here southeast Michigan. So I know. This is um. A trend uh, that we need to consider uh, as a township. this is, um, a trend, uh, that we need to consider, uh, as a township, how we're going to address it. Uh, at the last meeting, the Commission asked Megan and I to investigate some key characteristics as to what these data center companies look for, uh, when citing, uh, their large data centers. And, um, what we have found is that they look for, uh, power infrastructure, so high voltage transmission lines and/or power plants. Uh, these data centers consume a ton of energy, need those high transmission power lines to uh, accommodate their array of servers and, uh, cooling systems. Uh, additionally, they need a lot of land area, uh, typically between forty to a hundred plus acres. Buildings can range in size, uh, significantly. They can be as small as a few thousand square feet, all the way up to the hundreds of thousands of square feet. Um, they also need access to cooling and/or water. Um, as Megan has said at the previous meeting, there are new technologies emerging, uh, that allow data centers to cool their servers without using as much water. Um, internet connectivity, uh, or high-capacity fiber connections required. Um, we included in the packet, uh, Exhibit A showing where the current transmission lines exist here in the township and parcels that are fifty acres or largers near those transmission lines. Um, if a data center were to approach the township, these may be, uh, a handful of properties they would look at. Uh, however, there are a lot of factors that go into citing these data centers. Megan and I are available to take any questions you may have. Um, we'd like to continue this conversation and hopefully propose, um, a recommendation on how we think the Planning Commission or the township should move forward, uh, with addressing, uh, this emerging technology.
And if I may, thank you, um, Mr. Speaker. And if I may bring to your attention a memorandum that we received this evening at the beginning of the meeting. We have not yet had the opportunity to review this memorandum. It is from our Township Attorney. And because it is privileged and confidential, we can only review this in a closed session. I proposably do not entertain a closed session this evening, but it'll give us until next meeting to review this, and we can uh, schedule in a closed session for our review of this in light of data center at our December meeting. Any further discussion on the, our general appraisal of data centers right now?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have an question.
Ms. Meyer.
Roger. On this map, which is helpful in term, in terms of the lines and the parcel sizes, could you delineate the parcels that are owned by the state, like the BNR in Hudson Mills, and I think there's a the West Lake has like a cultivation district for fund degree amusement?
Yeah.
Because presumably those would be taken out of consideration.
Yep, you, you are absolutely right, and that's, um, um, something we could definitely do. Uh, a vast majority of the township, or not a majority, but a lot of the acreage north of North Territorial is protected, uh, whether it's owned by the state, University of Michigan, or Hudson Mills, those are likely, uh, off the table for any consideration. Um, if this were to occur, it would probably be south of North Territorial, uh, where a lot of our agricultural zoning district is and where large sites exist, uh, near transmission lines. Well, we could work on this map and, um, delineate that for the Planning Commissioners.
Um, also, and, because I also get a lot of news articles about this now. And I know in Celine, the debt, the proposed center is like over five hundred acres, and I think it is a hyperscale facility, what they, my understanding is the, the really big one. So the some of the farms, uh, you know, because I've driven around township, some of the farms are pretty flat. And it looks like from the photographs of the Celine site, it looks pretty flat. Some of the farmland, I think to the west, is somewhat hilly, I think outward. Like McKinley, when you drive, you know, it turns north and goes, that land is pretty hilly. Would that be an impediment to building a data center there unless it was very small or smaller scale?
Could potentially be, um, moving earth, uh, to accommodate massive buildings, uh, when there is a lot of topography, adds a, a larger price tag to the project. Um, so these companies may be looking for flat sites, uh, to save on costs.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anybody to flag the particularly hilly.
Um, so using some GIS layers, we could flag those that have topography on them. Um, also, another another thing that data centers tend to avoid are sites with wetlands. So we could add the wetlands layer. Um, that's a general layer, it's not very specific, but you, you wouldn't want to to place a building based on that layer, but it gives you a good idea as to whether, uh, a small portion or a large portion of a site could be, could, could have wetlands. So we could add those layers as well.
Yeah, I was trying to look at map, um, nine and eleven in the master plan in correlation to the map you used and see, yeah, because that has the wetlands on there and also the farmland that could be better farmland if it was drained. So I didn't know if that would, again, have a, would Megan just say?
Yeah, uh, the, the soil, the agricultural soils map, um, might only matter if that was a factor that you wanted to place on, um, a decision whether to allow any type of larg, large acreage use like that, that's not farming, um, that could potentially then take those soils away.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. I am just going to toss out here for general information, one, those of you who have access to M Live, there was an excellent article in the last forty-eight dollars in M Live regarding data centers and especially southeast Michigan. I commend any or all of you to read that. If I can determine some way to firm a little copy, I'll have it available for us here. Secondly, as you know, since last Funding Commission meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the retreat for Funding Commissioners in Franklinville, and data centers were a very important topic in that retreat. One of the concerns of data centers, of course, is the amount of electricity that they use. I mean, the, we're talking about uh, all the way up to the, the entire output of a nuclear power plant, or that is a large city. And I challenge the representatives of Consumers Energy about the concern of the increase in power and, or the increase in utility rates resulting from data centers. And their response was, that is not really a concern, because, uh, utility rates are controlled by the Michigan Public Safety Commission, or Michigan MPSA, Public Utilities Commission, whatever. Anyway, I not, personally not really confident that I'm going to put that much faith in the, uh, MPSA about controlling our utility rates, but consumers were adamant that it would not be a concern if, uh, data centers were to suddenly appear here. And that pretty much, uh, I think sums up our con discussion on data centers for this evening. Unless anyone else has anything they care to add. Hearing none, we shall proceed to the approval of the Funding Commission minutes of October twenty-eighth. Does anyone have any additions, the leading or changes to the minutes of October twenty-eighth?
I have it, um, edit to, no, I don't have a date, the session items. The very last line, it's a, under Sub G, it's a Planning Commission roles, responsibilities, and decisions. Role should be R O L E F.
Any further? Any additional changes to the minutes of October twenty-eighth? Hearing none?
Um, public comment on the agenda items? It's not on the agenda, but they don't recent the stuff.
Are you talking about, uh, Mr. Spiegel, are you talking about the minutes, or are you talking about further public comment?
Talking about further public comment, because.
Uh, that's, sure, that's on back page, item thirteen on the agenda.
Uh, that's not a agenda items. I was wondering about agenda items.
Well, when we get to public comment, I will assure you, sir, that you will.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything further on minutes of October twenty-eighth? Hearing none, in the opinion, Chair, the minutes are adopted. Correspondence. We have addressed the memorandum privileged confidential from our Township Attorney. DPC Rider, is there any other correspondence compared to?
No correspondence to report, please. No additional.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott, Board of Trustees.
All right, so, um, single hauler was approved, so the contract is, uh, being revised with, um, a small amount of language that had to be tightened, and, uh, so once it is on Supervisor Scott's desk, he is authorized to sign that. Uh, so the education process, um, which will, will begin. Um, so I believe that it's going to be the, it is going to be opt-in and, um, I believe the, the date, the start date is April first, where they will, but don't quote me on the April first date. But I believe it's April first is the date that they will start trash pickup with waste management. Um, outside of that, um, the, the board did approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission for the electronic sign duration standards. Um, so that was also approved. Uh, there was further discussion on our strategic plan, um, and then the, this isn't part of the Board of Trustees meetings, however, we are going to start, uh, monthly coffee chats. And, um, those are going to be the third Saturday of every month from nine AM to eleven. The majority are going to have, be subject-based, so like the first two, the January and February one, will be about educating our residents on the single hauler and how to sign up, what's considered recyclable, and, and discussing, um, you know, food waste. Uh, there, then after that, we'll be having sub, we'll be having subjects like, um, one of the subjects we want to do is township boards and committees. And what we want to do is use these coffee chats to educate the residents and allow them to come in and ask their questions. And so by having them subject-based, people can cherry pick which conversations they want to go to and which ones maybe they don't want to. Um, the point of doing it the third Saturday of every month is to, um, build continuity so that people know that they're happening. Uh, sometimes there will be open chat, but I wanted to let you all know that when we make them subject-based, it's because I want to have a guest speaker come in to, we do an overview, an education overview, and then the residents can ask that guest speaker uh, questions about their role. And so there is going to be a time where I'm going to want to ask someone from the Planning Commission, someone from zoning to, um, come in and do an overview, you know, with the boards and committees. I, I just think half our residents don't even know what these boards and committees do. So what we want to do is have one of the topics to be boards and committees, and what do they do and how do they affect me? Me as in a resident. And so I will be, just putting you all on notice, I might ask one or two or all of you at different times throughout the year to, uh, come in and speak and answer questions to, from our residents. This is part of a community engagement. It's, uh, helps with transparency. Um, and my, my hope is that if we build continuity, this is a, a item, an engagement process that could last for years. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Well, other concerns from Funding Commissioners? Hearing none, Mr. Rider, any concerns in fighting zone?
Uh, no concerns this evening.
Thank you, sir. Township Supervisor isn't with us this evening. Any concerns from our consultants, Ms. Minn?
No, no concerns. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, concerns from the recording secretary, ma'am?
No, thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Spiegel, we are not in public comment, sir.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go small recommendations. Um, just throwing it out. Then breakfast definition. You may want to consider the following language. Own or occupy principal place of residence of of an individual or individuals living full-time at the location. That's statutory kind of language, but I can send that to Fletcher in an email. So he doesn't have to write it down.
Thank you.
The second public comment is even more important. I'm sure the Commission is aware of the fact that DTE submitted a hundred and forty-eight page brief against public comment to the Public Utility Commission, and I have had some experience in that area. Dexter Township is a target. Planning some. It's a target of data center. And the concern that I have as a resident is what is the current ability of Dexter Township to really control whether a data center can be placed within the confines of the township under its current ordinances? And I think Celine, I think, I don't know if Megan knows, did you participate in the Celine project?
I didn't.
I did not, but we represent them and.
You represented Celine?
They are one of our clients, yes.
The problem was not just the fact that the ordinances were deficient. It was the policy, practice, and procedure. And I am absolutely approving of the creating of a committee. I think it's really, really important. I think it's a great idea. My concern is time is of the essence. And my concern is also what other communities are doing or not doing. Um, there is this article, and I'm not sure it showed in the M line, M Live article. But Washinaw, Wayne County are targets of current. Potential. Data centers. University of Michigan partnered up with the one that's going in on Ford, near Ford Lake. With some. Very powerful real estate people. And so an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So. What my suggestion is. An immediate establishment, at least some policy practice and procedure to give. Fletcher, who's done a phenomenal job dealing with this incredibly difficult issue. If someone comes in, because they're going to have to make an application. He has some support from you, at least. As to. What kind of standards is this community going to establish to allow such a facility? Now. That's my thought. Um, I think that a clear definition is essential, but time is of the essence, so. The quicker these issues are addressed, the better off we are. In addition. Is it contemplated that? Looking just at the master plan? Or can the committee also make recommendations relatively quickly as to potential? Ordinances that can be used. Um, within the not too distant future. In other words, that committee can do two things at one time. I think. It can propose ordinances and in addition propose changes to the master plan. So to the extent that. This commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Is it possible to include that? Within that committee's purview? Um, and I would not rely upon. The assurances of consumer power or DTE. Uh, I would take that with a big grain of salt in light of a hundred and forty-eight position paper where they don't want public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. And I'm sure that uh. Celine Township, the fourteen million dollars that was promised to them. Didn't, didn't help. A lot either. But that being as of May. Future agenda items?
We have a handful of items um, to put on your radar. Um, next meeting, we will set the twenty-twenty-six calendar year meeting sched- schedule. I will also have for you the annual report. Uh, that will be transmitted to the Township Board uh, concerning operations over this past year. Uh. That'll include actions um. Taken by this body. Uh, in the new year, first meeting of the new year, we'll have election uh, of officers as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ryer, and we have. Uh. Vacancies coming up and I know that Mr. Smith has already volunteered to be reappointed to the board. And Mr. Smith has already volunteered to be reappointed to the zoning board of appeals. And Ms. Abbott is going to take those to the Township Supervisor to get his concurrence. And Mr. Barry also has uh. Volunteered or requested to be reappointed to the board. So. Is, I believe there is a third person?
Missioner Hurd. Going to the website.
Oh.
Yeah.
My vice chair is going to be eligible for reappointment to the Funding Commission. Are you willing to serve another term?
Yes, I am willing to serve another term.
Ms. Abbott, would you please convey?
I will. I will.
Thank you. Are there any other issues that we would like to address this evening? Hearing none, the floor will entertain the motion to adjourn the. November twenty-fifth meeting of the Dexter Township Funding Commission.
Oh, good, mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Mayor that we adjourn, do we have support?
Support.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting this evening. The meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much.
I didn't even know my term was up, thanks for uh, bringing that to everyone's attention.